Five days' worth. I mean, this is... It looks like it's 2:30. Do we... We'll call the April 13th City Commission meeting to order. First of all, I will ask if the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we will do roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Franz.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could do the preliminary housekeeping.
Yeah, we'll do the preliminary housekeeping before we do the Pledge of Allegiance and so. Go ahead, Mike.
Need to confirm that Scott Gardner is on the line as a staff person monitoring the meeting?
Correct.
Scott. Okay. Are you able to confirm this line of media connection is online on cable TV?
Correct.
Are you able to confirm that line of media connection is online on their website?
Correct.
And are you able to confirm YouTube Live is up and running?
Correct.
Okay, so our phone system is working. We have confirmation of all three different platforms. And while I'm at it, I'll explain the call-in public participation format. We've been doing this for a while now, but we use a conference calling bridge that allows people to call in and then be called upon to speak and publicly comment or give a staff report. So anyone that wishes to participate, if they haven't already, needs to dial 785-621-0800. And they'll be asked for a participant code. That code is 782-956. And then they'll have to push the pound sign or hash mark. They will also be asked to identify themselves. They don't necessarily have to do that, but they at least need to push the pound sign or hash mark as if they have. That will then put them into the call. I'll be able to see them on the computer screen and see when the time is right if they've pressed star nine to digitally raise their hand to be called upon. And then I can unmute them and allow them to participate. I'm going to repeat the number one more time. It is, should be on the line of media connection screen. And it was also distributed with the public information that was distributed as part of the packet. But the number to call is 785-621-0800. And the participant code is 782-956. They'll need to follow that with the hash mark or pound sign. They'll be prompted to identify themselves, followed by the pound sign. And then when called upon, if they wish to speak, they would press star, asterisk, nine, and that will indicate they wish to speak. Now, lastly, we've had executive sessions in previous meetings. I don't, we don't have one on the agenda. I don't anticipate the need for one today. But the way we handle executive sessions is we'll make a motion to go into executive session like we would otherwise. We'll specify a time to return. Everything will be muted. The conference phone will be muted. The conference bridge will be muted. The line of media connection will put a screen on like they always do indicating we're in executive session. The same will occur for YouTube Live. And then when the appointed time comes and we're coming back into open session, we'll unmute everything. We'll reestablish the video feeds and we'll resume the meeting. But as I said, we don't have an executive session on the agenda today and don't anticipate the need for one based on our agenda items.
Mayor, if I may, one note that I'd not had a chance to speak to Mr. Skreg. But in consulting with bond counsel, the timing of your bond-related agenda item is important enough that I had talked with bond counsel about asking that we instruct any viewers as to what they should do in the event that there's an interruption in either of the video transmissions in terms of changing to the other. Is that something we could go through briefly?
Sure. Three venues to observe the meeting in terms of video are Sina Media Connection on cable TV, Sina Media Connection's website online, and then YouTube Live feed from the City of Salina. And so the YouTube Live feed can be found at youtube.com/cityofsalinakansas. And the online version of Sina Media Connection can be found at www.salinatv.org. And then they're also broadcasting on their cable channel 20 on Cox Cable. So there's three different venues. If for whatever reason that's not preferable to a listener, they can also call into the number that I read previously. They can hear the audio and participate when called upon.
Commissioner Franz here, and I don't know if this is a question for the city attorney or the city manager, but if that is, if we're concerned about that, why don't we just move 7.4 up to above 7.1 and get it out of the way?
We actually moved it back to give them time to size the bonds with the bid opening. It was at their request that they needed a little bit of time.
I'm glad I asked.
Yeah, the early start changed the pattern, as you might imagine.
Appreciate that. With that, we will ask those that are able to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's one other housekeeping item that I forgot to mention, and that is being on a phone call. If people are just listening to audio, it's requested that we announce ourselves before each time we speak. So I pledge to do my best, but I'll admit I'm as guilty as the rest of you of forgetting on occasion.
Mayor Hoppick, we do have one proclamation.
Item 3.1, the day of May 7, 2020, is a day of prayer in the United States of America.
Mayor Hoppick here. Due to limiting the number of individuals in our meeting, I have been asked to read the proclamation. And it's by the mayor of Salina, Kansas, a proclamation day of prayer. Whereas the 69th observance of the National Day of Prayer will be held on Thursday, May 7, 2020, with a theme, "Pray God's glory across the earth." And based on Habakkuk 2:14, "For the earth will be filled with the knowledge of the glory of the Lord as the waters cover the sea." Whereas a national day of prayer has been part of our country's heritage since it was declared by the First Continental Congress in 1775 and the United States Congress in 1952, approved a joint resolution setting aside a day each year to pray in our nation. And whereas the United States Congress by Public Law 100-307, as amended, affirms that it is essential for us as a nation to pray and directs the President of the United States to set aside and proclaim the first Thursday of May annually as a national day of prayer. And whereas leaders and citizens of our nation are afforded the privilege of prayer with the joy of seeking divine guidance, strength, protection, and comfort for Almighty God. And whereas recognizing the love of God, we, the citizens of Salina and the surrounding areas, treasure the freedom we have to gather in prayer. This year, we will use social media to unite in prayer, exercising our reliance on God's power in the face of the present challenges and threats we face. And whereas we unite with the fellow citizens to ask God for His blessing upon every individual of our city, especially as we cope with this new normal way of life this year due to the worldwide pandemic COVID-19, our love and faith in God will prevail. Now therefore, I, Michael L. Hoppick, mayor of Salina, Kansas, hereby proclaim May 7, 2020, as a day of prayer throughout the City of Salina and surrounding areas as I commend the observance to all our citizens. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the great seal of Salina to be affixed on this 13th day of April, 2020. And obviously, with all we have going on in our nation, not only should May 7 of 2020 be the day of prayer, but I think we should all go to prayer every day and ask for those that are frontline workers, the nurses, the doctors, the EMTs, and other medical staff, that we ask for protection of them. And we ask that we pray for those that are looking for a vaccine, that we might find one that will help protect all of us, and just pray that we will come out of this and be able to move forward in some type of new norm. So, thank you. With that, Mike Hoppick, mayor, it's time for Citizens Forum. Anyone who's listening in, you've been given the phone number. If you would like to make a comment, please push the button, what is it? Star nine to raise your hand, and you will be acknowledged at this time.
Mayor, I see no one within staff and support staff.
Okay. With that, we will move to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of April 6, 2020.
Okay. We have one thing on our consent agenda. That is the minutes from April 6. Do I have a motion to approve?
Commissioner Ryan, I move we approve the minutes of April 6, 2020.
Second. Commissioner Franz, second.
Okay. Mayor Hoppick, we have a first and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that passes. With that, we will move to Administration, 7.1.
Item 7.1, follow-up financial discussion.
Mike Skreg, if I could kick things off a little bit, I'll turn it over to Debbie Pack, our finance director, pretty quickly. We discussed in great detail the effort we went through to try to prepare some financial projections and the basis of those financial projections. And we went through that in great length with you last week. You provided some guidance in terms of concern about the significance of COVID-19 and its impact on our economy. You asked for, you raised a number of questions, which we inventoried and will address in the presentation today. But you also asked that we look at a 30, 60, and 90-day scenario, which we've done and provided as part of this revised information. Some of you have asked, you know, to what level of detail do we need to go through it today? And that certainly is a ear prerogative, I would say. What I would tell you is that the way that we did that is we took what was our initial projection for a 30-day scenario. Well, I should back up. Our initial projection for a 30-day scenario never did assume that we would just snap back to 100% on day 31. It had a ramped-up recovery and not even necessarily a full recovery by year end in the original scenario. And so what we've done in a 30, 60, and 90-day scenario is extended those 30-day assumptions, another 30 days or another 60 days, and then taken what we previously had about recovery and pushed those out in the remaining months. So I don't know, if need be, we'd be happy to go through any of those assumptions in detail. But suffice it to say that we, in a 30, 60, 90-day scenario, we've extended the amount of the assumed stay-at-home order by the corresponding number of days, and then we pushed back the assumed recovery accordingly. I would acknowledge that it could be that we're in a stay-at-home order, we start to recover, we end up back in a stay-at-home order. And, you know, we're not to that level of accuracy in our forecasting to begin with. But I think if we look at it in a 30, 60, 90-day approach like we provided you, that ought to at least cover those recurring stay-at-home scenarios. So with that, I do have a decision point for you at the end that I'll frame up for you. But I'll turn it over to Ms. Pack, the finance director, to walk you through this updated information.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. As Mr. Skreg said, what we wanted to do in this particular presentation was kind of address the questions that you asked us last week and also provide you with that updated financial estimates that we looked at going out 60 and 90 days. So the list of questions that we came up with were what is our employment rate, trying to get forecasts for that 30, 60, 90-day scenarios, take a look at the EMS revenue assumptions because we thought those were a little high. There was questions about the breakdown of property tax, what portion was commercial and residential, what effect the COVID is going to have on the debt service fund and their balances of the bond and interest fund itself. Take a look at some other funds, some of the enterprise funds, to see what the revenue factors are there or expense factors are there. And then take a look at some of the outside contracts that we have to see if there's any opportunity there for savings on those. So I'll go through these, and as you see questions, I'm going to be pretty general. Please feel free to stop me and ask me questions as you see anything that you would question. So the first thing we wanted to take a look at was what unemployment was in Saline County. The most recent data that we could find was from January of 2020, at which point the unemployment rate was 3.4%. Kansas Department of Labor is projecting that the state unemployment rate in May of 2020 is going to be around 7%. As of April 4, 2020, there were 538 unemployment claims in Saline County. So we can see that that number is probably going to go up. The other data that I provided here was what happened to Saline County unemployment in 2008 when the recession hit. As you can see, it was kind of delayed till about 2010. It peaked in 2012 at 6.9%, and then started to go down, reaching its lowest point in October of 2019 at 2.6%.
Excuse me, Ms. Pack?
Yes.
Louisa Hodges here, and I apologize for breaking in. It's hard for me because I can't see you all on screen. But last week's meeting, did you say that the unemployment statistics come out weekly or biweekly?
I thought that our Saline County would, but the state statistics are coming out weekly, not necessarily the county statistics. So we're seeing state statistics, but not county.
Okay. And then would the 538 unemployment claims, would that be like in addition to the thousands that we saw referenced in the table below? Or would that be included in that 1034?
That 1034 was the claims during that period of time, which was back in January of 2020. So I believe the 538 is new claims filed in the week of April 4.
Okay, thank you.
So then we wanted to take a look at where we were on that 30-day, 30, 60, 90-day projection. And this is the summary of the general fund as we showed you last week. We've put numbers in here in red that we have changed since last week's based on the information that you either gave us or information that we found in ourselves, whether that was savings or reduction in revenue. But you can see in general, the overall loss or reduction in revenue at a 30-day projection is 11%. At a 60-day, it's about 12%. And at a 90-day, it's about almost 13%. We have identified savings in commodities, contractual services, and capital outlay. The bottom line being that in a 30-day scenario, we anticipate being short $2.1 million. And a 60-day, in the general fund, approximately $2.6 million. And a 90-day stay-at-home order, approximately $2.9 or $3 million short. And this is just the general fund.
This is Mike Skreg. If I could offer one observation, I know we had some conversation last week about just kind of a sense that we ought to be in the 20% range or even the 25% range. And I wouldn't necessarily disagree. The thing that we looked at as staff, if you dive into these revenue numbers a little bit more, you're going to see that, you know, fees and charges are assumed to be down 56%. Sales tax is in its constant across all three assumptions, on the assumption that we discontinue the programming that generates those fees in all of those scenarios. Sales tax is down anywhere from 16% to 21% depending on the scenario. Other taxes are down 21% to 32%. So there are certain categories that are more elastic or responsive to the economic downturn, and those certainly are showing 20% and more in terms of impacts. On the other hand, there's some revenue sources that are a little bit more stable. We've assumed property tax delinquencies at 10% across the board, and that's a sizable revenue source. As luck would have it, just by way of our budgeting, we're actually still anticipating some increase in investment income. So we're hopeful that despite interest rates, the way that we've budgeted and the way that we've structured investments this year will be beneficial to the general fund. So while we talk about aggregate totals of 11% up to 13%, you know, I could see where you would think, well, 60 days should be twice 30 days, and 90 days should be three times 30 days. But as I mentioned before, we're carrying forward that assumption for a stay-at-home order, and then we're also carrying, we've all been carrying all along, kind of depressed assumptions for the remainder of the year. So that kind of explains why it may not be trending like you might initially think.
Makes sense to me.
Having said that, these are our best effort of projections. I don't claim to be the expert and have this nailed down with any absolute certainty. We're doing our best to read the literature and make an educated projection.
Commissioner Franz, these numbers, the savings, offsetting savings have not been netted out of these yet.
Yes, they have.
They have? Okay, so this is...
The ones that we have spoken to you before about contractual service, part-time services, commodities...
They've all been backed out, so this is a net number?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's where you'll see in the bottom section of this table where it shows expenditures, the negative number in that column that shows $2.6 million, we're anticipating almost 6% savings in expenses at this point. Those are numbers we've gone out either to the departments and said, hey, we need to cut this, and they've come back with significant cuts in their own budgets or the items that we brought forward to you so far.
I see. If I look over at the budget, original budget column, I see the difference. Yes, thank you.
Mike Skreg, as Ms. Pack mentioned, I think we've made three passes through the budget, and the department heads have been very responsive. I've been pleased with the things that they've identified, the significance of some of the things they've identified. We may have a handful of things left, some of which we'll talk about when we get to the personnel, staff-related items, but I think we've gone through it with a fine-tooth comb.
So then the next three slides, and I won't go into these great detail, but I will show you that as we go through these, we have the 30, the 60, and the 90-day scenarios. And as Mr. Skreg was explaining earlier, if you look at the 90-day scenario on Slide 7, you can see that what we anticipated for sales tax, for example, on the first line, not only is that at 5% in June, but it's also July and August, which takes us out to that 90 days. And our 30 days, that would only be a 5% in June, and in our 60-day, that would be 5% in June and July. So we basically have just taken that minimum amount that we looked at in 13. Some of those we adjusted a little bit from the last time we spoke, just based on our conversations with you. But for the most part, we've just carried those forward and then pushed back the recovery through the end of the year. So as you can see, in the 60 or the 90-day scenario, we're expecting that the sales tax will be down 23% overall, overall industries in that scenario. Are there any questions on that, how that kind of worked and how we flowed that into the system?
Commissioner Hodges here.
Yes.
Just in terms of the department store, item we project, basically being unchanged, is that, or are you talking about like the large or the target, and you're just trying to do the counter like that?
As you know, each retailer signifies themselves in a specific order category. I would say that the big-box stores are within that category. What we tried to do is, as we saw individual stores in that category that we felt were more harmed, we tried to take those out of that category so that they were kind of set in the side on their own.
So Mike Skreg here. We have to sign a confidentiality agreement, so we can't speak to that level of detail. But I would tell you, at the staff level, we're able to go in and see exactly who is in that category and adjust our assumptions, taking that into account. So, you know, Moody's projected that grocery retailers would see growth of 5% to 8% in 2020 because of kind of the shift from restaurants to grocery. So trying to factor that into the various categories where grocery retailers end up in our individual information, that's how we kind of came to the assumption on that line item as well as the grocery store line item.
Commissioner Ryan here. If there are a lot of internet sales, where do those come back in under this?
Use tax. And, Mike Skreg, use tax, and there's a couple of things going on there. If you recall, there was conversation about whether Kansas was going to require online retailers to pay sales tax, and in October last year, that went into effect. So we were seeing use tax growth in the first three months of 2020, just on its own. And then we tried to take into account that as well as whether we could anticipate any online sales growth.
And on this, the graphs that we show, the 60, 90, 30 days, if you look at the first group of, like, the darker blue with the three rows that are highlighted, the middle one of those is use tax. So we're showing that we anticipate use tax to be at 9%. See where I'm saying? Okay. And that's basically on what Mr. Skreg said and what we've been seeing since about October, we've been seeing those numbers trending up.
So Mike Skreg again. Tara Sabre, our deputy finance director, was very involved and put a lot of effort into working these spreadsheets, and she is on the line. So I have her muted, but I want to remind her, she certainly has the opportunity to press star nine at any point and interject into the conversation.
So that kind of got us through the sales tax portion that we looked at last time. The next item that we wanted to revisit was EMS revenue. And as you recall from our last projection, we had EMS revenue actually going up for the year. We did do some adjustments. We did an adjustment for the timing of the county payment. We have seen that the call volume has remained steady, so we have not increased that number based on what we're seeing today. We did not include projected increase because of COVID. EMS rates, as you recall, back in November or October, we raised our rates for EMS because what we were finding is some of the insurance companies were allowing us a larger number to claim. So when we did our comprehensive fee schedule last fall, we did increase our rates a little bit. So we do anticipate that the revenue for 2020 will be a little bit higher than what we saw in 2019. And then I wanted just to take a look again at the potential savings. We kind of provided you with some generic numbers. We've gotten a little bit more detail on that. We looked at part-time savings. We've attached now what the savings to those benefits would be for the employments and the salary savings and personnel services. We've also attached what potential savings we would have in employee benefits. And this table shows you kind of what those numbers are with applying the benefits and taxes and the other health and work comp that we have on those particular items. And all of these numbers are reflected in the summary that we looked at earlier. So these are just kind of how we got to those numbers.
Mike Skreg again. I do want to stop and pause here just a minute. As Ms. Pack said, this has not changed from the conversation that we've had over the last couple of weeks, I guess. But one of your action items today is to pass a resolution related to the capital improvement program and part-time salary expenditures. And the language in that resolution authorizes the city manager to implement part-time salary reductions. So I want to be clear that, as Ms. Pack said, the financial assumptions that we're working on and what I would take the outcome to be if you were to pass the resolution unamended would be that we would not fund the part-time positions listed on this slide, which are part-time mowers for the Parks Department that have to be covered with full-time staff. It presumes that Kenwood Cove would not open, and we wouldn't have lifeguards in that staffing. It presumes the fieldhouse is closed. It presumes the museum is staffed with only full-time staff, and it presumes rec programming is discontinued for the remainder of 2020. Now, I would tell you that there's not an expectation that we're going to be on a stay-at-home order or mass gathering limitation through December 31 of 2020. This is a function of the budget forecast and the revenue forecast as much or more than it might be the stay-at-home order. Having said that, the stay-at-home order is already impacting our ability to bring lifeguards on board and train them, and it's likely to impact the start date if we are inclined to open Kenwood Cove, impact the opening date, which then turns it from marginally maybe being able to break even or make a little bit of money to losing money. So it is all kind of interrelated, but just from a purely financial standpoint, our projected losses are driving this recommendation and this decision point.
Commissioner Hodges here. Would just a quick question. And these things have been calculated in with the previous slides that we saw, as Commissioner Franz has mentioned, correct?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
And since Kenwood Cove basically operated to break even, and the fieldhouse doesn't recover its costs and everything, and same with rec programming, we would be seeing any loss in revenue per se because these programs operate generally either at break even or are lost, is that correct?
This is Mike Skreg. We wouldn't see a net loss, we'd see a net gain, but the, I mentioned earlier, the 56% decrease in fees, that's where the lost Kenwood Cove admission and rec programming fees is accounted for. But the expenses eclipse the revenue to the point that it's financially helpful if we discontinue losing money on those programs.
Thank you.
So then the next thing we wanted to bring forward was, when we came back on April 6th, we had estimated a 10% savings in commodities. We went out to the departments once again, and we said, we need a minimum of 10%. What else can you give us? They came up with another $103,000. So our savings in commodities has gone up an additional $103,000 to about $322,000 based on their input. As well as contractual services, we estimated about $450,000 savings back on April 6th. We again reached out to departments to ask them specifically, within their budgets, what they could do, and we were able to bring that savings up to $562,000. Capital outlay, we really hadn't touched this section before, but we did go out when we were asking about the other information from departments and requested what additional savings we could have in this particular category, and we were able to get commitments from those departments for almost $177,000 in savings in that category.
I presume that's not general fund?
This is general fund only.
Yeah, Mike Skreg here.
I didn't think we had that much budgeted in the general fund for capital.
Odds and ends, photocopiers and, I guess, equipment.
Computer technology, equipment, desks, those types of things. We had approximately $920,000 budgeted in the general fund.
The clarification I was going to offer is that we have addressed in great detail the capital improvement plan. These are capital items in individual department budgets where they, they still may have to go to bid and bring them back to you for a purchase, but it's more the ancillary software, hardware, photocopiers.
Office equipment, computers.
I was just thinking, when I look at the spreadsheet and the budget, the details, expenses by category against fund, I thought the general fund capital outlay column said zero.
No, it should have said the 900 and some thousand. I will say a majority of that is in computer technology, because a lot of their purchasing is over, but I can double-check that book just to make sure.
Okay.
Then the next question we wanted to address is the property tax. The question arose, what's commercial versus residential? So the county provided this information on the breakdown of assessed value. Approximately 61% of the assessed value is residential, approximately 38% is commercial. There's a little bit of mix in there with agricultural and vacant and other things. So in the general fund property tax level, that equates to about $6.3 million in residential, about $4 million in commercial taxes in the general fund. Then we wanted to kind of look at some of the other funds. I lost page 13 on my sheets here. The debt service fund is the next one.
Can I ask, Debbie, you said on, I apologize, on property tax, when we were discussing earlier, did you say you were looking at a 10% delinquency?
We were, yes.
Okay, so it'd be 10% of the 10.2 million, so approximately 1.2 million in.
In the general fund, yes.
And that's for, that would be second half of 2019 taxes to be paid?
It could be the second half of 2019 or the first half of 2020.
Because you're looking through the end of the.
No, we don't get 2020s until 2021, so it would be the second half.
I was going to say, because it's due by December.
Correct.
But, okay.
We don't get it until January.
So that million two would be based on the second half?
Correct, and we'll have those numbers the first of June.
First and second half of 2019, okay.
Sometime around the first of June, so we'll have those numbers.
Yeah, because that, this is a nice breakdown, because really, I think you've made the comment before, a lot of residential properties are escrowed, so at this point, they've probably collected through their payments and should have funds to pay. The commercials, where I'm concerned, and I think with what we're seeing at the hotels and some other facilities, the commercial is where I think we have our risk at this point, the biggest risk, so, thank you.
And I did reach out to the county, asking them specifically about second-half bills. Have they seen anything? They have not seen any direction that those will be delayed at this point. They're due May 10th, so hopefully that doesn't come out in the next month, but if it does, that's what we'll have to deal with, so. Then we wanted to take a look and see how that affected the debt service fund. That was another question and concern, was what's happening in the debt service fund? If we're seeing losses in property tax in the general fund, transient guest tax, what's going on in the debt service fund? So in the debt service fund, that break of residential and commercial is about 1.8 million to about $1.2 million. We did apply the 10% delinquency rate in here on a 30, 60, 90-day. We also applied a significant loss in what we call the debt service proceeds, and that's the transient guest tax transfer for the bicentennial debt. We showed a 46%, 50%, and 55% reduction on that. We showed 10% on special assessments in motor vehicles, because those are really tied to your property tax. So in that scenario, we still show that this fund would come in with revenues over expenditures for 2020, and should still have a balance of about $1.8 million in all three scenarios. The next fund that we wanted to take a look at was the sales tax capital fund. We know that this one's going to be hit, just like the general fund with sales tax, so we applied those percentages, the same that we applied them in the general fund, showing that we would decrease over a 30, 60, and 90-day period by 18%, 21%, and 23% of sales tax, which brought our revenue down from 8.3 million to about 6.9 million. We also are reflecting here the savings that we've brought to you as far as projects and purchases over the last few weeks. We're showing a savings of $2.5 million. So in a 30, 60, or 90-day projection, we're still showing that this fund would have a net income, and the fund balance would be anywhere between $3 million and $2.7 million based on these estimates.
So Mike Skreg here. I mentioned earlier that I had a decision point I was going to bring up at the end of the presentation. It pertains to this, and we'll talk about it in greater detail, but as Ms. Pack noted, depending on the 30, 60, 90-day scenario, accounting for reduced sales tax proceeds and accounting for savings, there is some net gain there, and the question is, do we apply it to the general fund as a property tax stabilization measure to address the impacts of the pandemic?
So in moving toward that question, we wanted to provide you with what kind of would give us the authority to do so. Back in 2016, when we did the election, their statutory authority, 12-187, gave us the authority to actually do that election for sales tax. It was passed by the resolution authorizing the election, and the ballot language had to include what we proposed that we would use as sales tax. And part of that was preserving a stable property tax rate. So we felt like that would give us that authority to transfer that, just as we are now. Every annually, we're transferring a portion of that to the general fund. We've seen some significant expenditure reductions that have been identified in the sales tax fund, so this kind of just gives you a breakdown of what that looks like out of capital planning, building facilities, and vehicle and equipment. I just wanted to tie this number back to that savings number that we showed on the previous slide of the sales tax fund. It also shows you the net kind of savings or income for those 30, 90, 60-day scenarios. So that's just a summary for that page. I think the other thing we have to think about with property taxes, especially as we've been talking about that a little bit now, is we do have a tax lid. So there's some concern that if we have to default raising our property taxes, well, we have the ability to do it within the property tax lid. So I wanted to provide you with the information on the lid, the statute that governs that, 792925(c), and it does kind of give us the basic breakdowns, but I also wanted to give you what those exceptions were, because as we know, we can raise our taxes. You take your current tax levy and you multiply it by the three- or four-year CPI average, and that's where you can levy your taxes in the next year, unless you can qualify for any of these exceptions. And one of the exceptions that we thought was interesting was E., which is highlighted, it's expenses related to a federal, state, or local disaster, or federal, state, or local emergency, including, but I'm limited to, a financial emergency declared by a federal or state official. There's still some question, because this has not been tested, so we don't know exactly how this would apply, but there is that possibility that COVID-19 could qualify for this exception. We do use a couple of the exceptions already with fire and police EMS expenditures, but that one we have not used in the past.
Mayor Hoppick, who would make that decision, whether E. would qualify?
I would say it's probably the Department of Administration, which is the budget, they kind of are the rulers of all budget items.
To be proactive instead of reactive, would it be beneficial to, again, I'm going to look to the league of municipalities, to make that phone call and ask that question? Because again, I'm guessing Slyna wouldn't be the only municipality in the state of Kansas that would be looking at something like that, and it would, it'd be nice for one phone call to maybe answer that question for all of us. I think it'd be beneficial if we could get that question answered.
I certainly can follow up. I've been on some conference calls with the league where they've pointed out that this language exists, this exception exists, and speculated that you might be able to make use of it. The concern that I have, and I think I've shared with you before, is on the federal level, the funding that is being made available is directed at COVID-19-related expenses and not revenue losses. A lot of the grant funding very specifically says it's not to replace lost revenue. And so if you look at this language, it really says two things. It talks about expenses relating to that disaster, which could be the COVID-19 expenses, but also a financial emergency. I don't know that a financial emergency's been declared, just a health emergency. So we certainly can try to get additional clarity on that.
Mayor Hoppick here. If you listen to the media, there's a disaster in the economy, so I think it would be worth the phone call. Again, when we look at some of the COVID-19 measures that are out there to help small businesses and others, it doesn't seem like any of those are set up to help municipalities, so.
Some of them go out of their way to carving municipalities out.
Right, so this would maybe be that one. At least we shouldn't, I think, know the answer as we move forward to try to.
Commissioner Franz, not to rain on the parade, but this specifically talks about expenses, and what we're experiencing is lost revenue, which is not an increase in expenses, so I have to wonder how that would be viewed. You know, I don't, it's about as clear as mud at this point.
That's why I think we ought to find out, so, thank you.
And I would add that most of the exceptions do have to do with expenses. So did your expense raise over a certain level or something like that? So, yeah, that's something that we'll have to get some more clarification on. The other thing we wanted to look at, we talked about last week or a couple of weeks ago, was our ability to transfer funds from enterprise funds to the general fund in the case that they would have excess operating or funds at the end of, surplus at the end of the year. Statute 12-8825d is specific to utilities, and it does allow that there could be a transfer into the general fund if the operating fund has a surplus at the end of the year. We did not find specific statutory authority for sanitation or some of the other ones, but we're still kind of looking for that information as we move forward.
Mike Skreg again. Part of the reason that we were focused on this is, as you know, an agenda item on your agenda today is issuance of bonds, and so there was concern about what the municipal bond market was going to do and whether we'd be able to issue the bonds, and so we were kind of anticipating in a worst-case scenario, might we have to buy our own debt with reserve balances? I'm getting ahead of the agenda item, but I do want to share with you that we got multiple bidders interested in our both sets of bonds today, and we got very favorable rates. So from a need standpoint, from a fund transfer standpoint for bond issuance, I don't think that's a concern today.
And then we also found some language in our own financial policies that indicate, but this more, it's more constrictive than I lead on to here, because there's another page that kind of addresses other funds, but it does say if at the end of the year there's excess funds over the target, they can be used for specific uses. It doesn't necessarily indicate that it can be a transfer. This particular slide shows what you can do within the general fund. If I would have read farther in the policy that I didn't provide you, in other funds, it basically says the same thing. It doesn't say that it can be transferred to another fund, but it does say you can address one-time capital purchasers or in-anticipated capital purchases as you go through those funds, and they have surplus taxes or funding.
Somewhat tongue-in-cheek, I'd like to compliment the fellow who wrote those.
For those that don't get the inside joke, Commissioner Franz wrote that when he was Finance Director of Franz.
So then the next fund that we wanted to look at, there was some concern about special alcohol revenue. We wanted to look at the Special Parks and Recreational Fund. As you recall, we did reclassify some expenses into this fund for a project. I thought we did anyway, maybe we didn't.
Yes, what was it?
It's not in here, though, so I'll have to add that back. So what we did with this was we reduced the special alcohol. This is the buy-drink tax, so this is drinks that are purchased in restaurants, bars, by caterers. We reduced that by 46%, 50%, and 55% over the three 30-day period scenarios. And then we just showed the expenditures as what is budgeted, and in those cases, as that revenue goes down, we would be using fund balance to support that budgeted level.
Are those expenditures tied to a specific list that has been planned at this point?
No, no, we had it budgeted as the highest priorities on the Parks Maintenance Plan, but we haven't identified specific ones. I do believe, though, we did identify one of the projects.
Dean Evans drainage.
I thought that was, but I didn't pick it up here, so that was about $60,000.
I would suggest that another possibility for this, should the need arise, would be to fill in any shortfall in the golf course fund, instead of taking that out of the general fund, and I'm just throwing that one out there.
We've identified this as a possible closer look of, not trying to fund things we didn't otherwise need to fund, but identifying things that would be ineligible and appropriate use.
And then the next fund we looked at was the Tony's Pizza Event Center. Can't see what I have up there.
Excuse me, this is Commissioner Hodges. Did we discuss slide number 20 with the sales tax economic development?
Oh, no, went right past that one, sorry. Flipping pages, and, so let's go back to slide 20.
I was trying to read it and make sure that I'm on the same page as you all. I just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss it.
I'm having a hard time seeing the screen, so. No, page 20 is the Sales Tax Economic Development Fund. There again, we applied the same reductions in sales tax that we did for the other funds. As you can see, with any reduction in that fund, we will be using fund balance to fund the commitments that we currently have with the vendors that we currently have, and we'll look at who those are a little bit later in this slide or in this presentation.
So Mike Skreg here. As I assume you recall, we had a request for $100,000 for a childcare initiative, which we took under advisement, but hadn't made a commitment, and the conversation was, you know, it might come out of this fund if the fund could support it, and if we can make some adjustments elsewhere. And then, as you know, this is our fund where we respond to economic development prospects and requests for funding, so that balance can easily get tapped depending on the need.
Commissioner Hodges here again. So if I'm looking at this correctly, absent any economic development cash request, we would have around $600,000 to disburse over the course of 2020.
Correct, or beyond, but correct.
Right, but I mean, just looking at what we are going to have pretty clear to actually use to provide an economic incentive, if that were to be paid for in cash, that's what we would be looking at. And this, I'm sorry, Ms. Pack, did you? And this, I'm sorry, Ms. Pack, did you say that the $100,000 for the Salina Childcare Initiative, that's not reflected in this, correct?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
I will point out, too, though, if you look at the original budget for that, we were budgeting more than what we were anticipating getting in revenue in that fund, just based on the commitments that we have to SCDO, SDI, and those entities that we'll look at in our later slide. We went over, make sure, Special Parks, we went over that. Special gas tax is the next fund that we're at, Slide 22. We did want to look at this. We did recognize that this is the gas tax that's per gallon of purchase, it's not based on the sale price, it's per gallon. As Commissioner Franz mentioned a couple weeks ago, we believe that predominantly amount of this is probably commercial use, but we did reduce this by 20%, 30%, and 40% over those 30-, 60-, 90-day scenarios, just in the event that we could calculate what the residential use was going to be, or personal use was going to be, the effect that was going to have on this. In those three scenarios, we show that we would be using fund balance. Both of those, the fund balance could be anywhere from 1 point. We were originally budgeting 1.8 million. In the 90-day scenario, we would anticipate that that may go down to 1.3 million.
Mike's Craig again. This is another fund that we, if need be, we might be able to target it towards street work, though we might have otherwise planned to fund out of the sales tax fund or the general fund.
Commissioner Franz, another League of Municipalities question is, they typically, I think, prepare the estimates for this each year.
Yes.
It might be helpful to talk to them and to see if they see any changes. I am not quite sure how closely the current taxes that are collected are tied to the distributions that are made to municipalities. I'm sure there's a time lag in there, but I don't know if, for example, all of the 2020 distributions come from 2020 taxes, or if maybe half of them are already in the bank from 2019, so to speak. So that might affect this also, and mitigate some of the impact, at least this year.
Mike's Craig, I was on a call with the League where that came up, and they acknowledged that they expected an impact. It was pretty much anecdotal in terms of what their observations were about driving pattern, personal driving patterns and traffic on the road, but I didn't, I didn't get a sense that they had a basis to have a more refined estimate. But I'll ask.
Well, you know, if they don't know, they don't know.
Mayor Hoppick here. I think one of the good questions that Commissioner Franz said is, what type of delay? You know, we look at 60 days on sales tax and 90 days on transient guest tax. It'd be interesting to know what our delay on this gas tax is, as far as how it's going to impact 2020, too.
And the other thing I think I'll look at, too, is they give us those budget numbers, and I'd be curious to see how accurate they are to the actual numbers we receive. So I think I'll go back and look for a few years to see whether their assumptions have been close. I don't have that information on that slide, so I'll go back and look at that. The next fund that we wanted to look at, we talked about this a little bit, was the Tony's Pizza Event Center. We're highly concerned about the transient guest tax. There is a portion of this that comes from transient guest tax. We have reduced that portion. There also is a transfer from the general fund in this revenue, so that's kind of offset with those numbers. That's why those percentage numbers don't look as high as what we would have put in the transient guest tax and some of the other funds, because it's mixed. I will say, we have not included in this assumption any reductions that Spectra has put in place. We know that they've furloughed some employees, they've been doing some other measures to look at their expenses. We do not have a number on that yet to know whether that, how much effect that's going to have on this particular fund.
Mayor Hoppick here. I had a question about that, because we contract with them, so we really don't have any say on staffing, correct? But if...
Mike's Craig here. We do contract with them. They get a fixed fee for their services, and then they do get some incentive fees, and I hesitate to call it incentive fees, just because of the tax structure of it, but there are some varying fees depending on their performance. They submit a budget. Our agreement provides that in the event of significant, they realize the likelihood of a significant deviation, they need to submit a revised budget. As Ms. Pack said, they have commendably gotten out ahead of this, I think, in terms of not just the furloughing, but everything from sending food back that they could, managing their energy bill, those type of things. And they've indicated a readiness to talk budget. I've had to put them off, just, we've been trying to deal with these type of things, but I took consolation in knowing they were on it, and they were ahead of it, and we'll double back and take a look at it. But, so I have every reason to expect that budgeted expenditure, they'll come in at least $23,000 better than that, which would at least get the fund to a positive, and I expect they'll do better than that.
And then the next fund we looked at was the golf course. We tried to determine what the effect of closure would have. So basically, what we did was we just took one month's worth of revenue, declined those fees by that amount, and then in the 60-, 90-days, we took two months, three months. We have not gotten specific. I reached out to the golf course staff and to the park staff today to see if they could get me some updated expenditure numbers, to see what that number's going to truly look like. So there's not a lot of information on here as far as savings on the expenditure side yet, but we do anticipate that that will come in with the numbers that are a little bit higher than what I've added here. As we can see, even in a 30-day shutdown, we would anticipate that that fund go in the negative. Hopefully, with their savings on some part-time salaries and such, that number could come out to at least break-even point, but I'll report on that as soon as I get some more information from them.
Mayor Hoppick here, and I'm not sure, Mike, as to when would be the best time. I have a couple of questions about the golf course and some other things as far as openings and stuff. When would be a good time to discuss that?
If it's golf course-specific, we can do it here. I had a couple of pieces of information as well.
And I'm not saying it's the right thing to do, but it would be interesting to see. I don't know if anyone's followed this, but in Topeka and Kansas City both, I know they had closed their golf courses and then reopened them, putting in certain measures, one, limiting no more than one person per cart, washing the carts down after usage. I think they took their start times from eight minutes to 16 minutes apart. They've done some things with the actual holes, so that no one's required to pull out the flag. So it appears that there's some other communities that have reviewed, you know, things, and again, people are trying to get outside and get exercise, and again, you're trying to, you know, do your distancing of six feet apart, you know, and that's usually on the green and on the tee box, you know, when you have to worry about that. So it may be something worth doing a little research on, and at least, I'm not saying that's what we want to do, but I know there's some others that have made that decision. It'd be interesting to see.
Sure. Mike's Craig, we definitely can look at that. The, I want to give the golf course staff credit. They were doing some of that before we had the stay-at-home order come out. The spreading out the tee times, pulling, not having the pins. They were trying to do their business without having to come into the clubhouse and make a reservations online, those type of things. I think the thing that kind of tipped the balance for us at the moment was when the stay-at-home order came out, we were trying to let as many of our staff stay home as possible and get down to minimal staffing levels. And so that, combined with part-time staff, at the moment, it's all they can do just to keep up with mowing fairways and greens and keeping some of the areas in shape.
And if fees offset the expense of having that individual work, it makes sense. And again, I think, looking at the other communities, I think they were doing online, and maybe even paying online with credit card only or something, so you weren't having the interaction between the staff and the public. So anyway, just...
I think if we can get out of the stay-at-home order, we certainly could see what the fees might look like, and whether it'll cover expenses or break-even or come close. The other thing I just saw this morning, the Parks Director shared with me a survey that the National Park and Rec Association did on various things, pool closures and golf course closures, and I forget all the categories, but it struck me that of the respondents, 63% had closed their golf courses. Because I don't feel like that's the case in Kansas, and, you know, maybe it's more on the coast, but that number stuck with me.
Yeah, so, okay.
Commissioner Hodges here. I mean, if it's safe to and cost-effective to implement the measures to reopen the golf course, that's fine by me, but I think something that we need to remind ourselves about, and the community, too, is that the COVID cases aren't projected to peak in Kansas until late April or early May. And I think that we're all getting kind of quarantined to peak, but we may need to wait this out just a little bit longer before we, you know, start making major shifts in terms of what we've done to date.
And Commissioner, that reminds me, Mike's Craig again. Two of the considerations that I think I shared with you, and we shared as part of our press release, was the difficulty of cleaning the golf carts in particular, with them being all plastic. That probably represents additional staff time beyond what we would schedule otherwise. And then, secondly, with the limited staffing and hours to maintain the parks, we shifted our focus to parks that were available to the public without a fee. So I think if we can get a little bit more sense in the stay-at-home order and have a sense that revenues might pick up, we can try to revisit that.
And Mayor Hoppick here, to follow up on Commissioner Hodges' comment, I agree, and I think, from looking at our numbers, I think Kansas and primarily Saline County's done an excellent job. We've had, what, nine reported cases? I know we obviously have more than that in the community, probably, but we've had nine positive confirmed cases, so we are doing a good job of the social distancing, it appears. So it's, again, I was just throwing that out there, something to review, so, not sure when that would take place, but I know it's, I know two of our three golf courses in town are currently still open.
Yeah, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Davis, you know, the last thing you want to do three months from now is track cases back, and, you know, you realize the source of spread was the clubhouse at those two, because it's not just those golfers, it's their families, this thing, every person with it, in fact, six other people. You know, so, you know, stay at home means stay at home. And I think come September, we can look at it, but it's, because once you let, you know, like anything, well, the golfers can do it, how about the basketball players? If we only have, you know, two people on the court at once, I mean, it's, and I agree, it's just way too early, right, to get people's hopes up. Now, you want to separate people by 100 feet, they can go out and walk the golf course, which is what some communities are doing, but you have to keep the pace up, no laggards, because there's no passing people. Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
The next fund we took a look at was the sanitation fund. The only thing we looked at here was the possible delinquencies in payment, based on the fact that we are not able to disconnect waters, water bills or water usage at this point, based on the directive by the governor. And because our sanitation fees are billed with our water fees, we assume that we could see an uptick in that delinquency. We only carried 10% because we felt like that was a pretty important service that people were going to continue to pay for. It didn't make, it did make a little bit of an effect on them. The fund balance started at 1.7 million, could go down to 1 million at the end of a 90-day stay, based on this information. We have not looked at savings in this fund either, particularly because we've been focusing on the general fund for the most part. So some of these enterprise funds, we haven't done as deep a dive as we have in some of those other funds.
Commissioner Franz here, and this is probably no way to make real sense out of the numbers, but what's happening is people are staying at home, they're not recycling. The city does primarily residential pickup, no commercial pickup, and so we're going to see a shift in volume, to some degree, from the commercial side, you know, the stuff they used to throw away at work, they now throw away at home. People are working from home, so I really expect to see some tonnage change on the city side, which will drive our expense up, but I have no way of knowing, you know, there's no way to know how much. And for a month or two, it's probably not a big deal, if we get back to regular pickup.
Right.
The next fund we looked at was solid waste. We didn't anticipate many changes to this fund, because it's mainly commercial, and those entities are still basically working. They say things are still the same, it's solid waste. So we didn't really change anything on this from one budget to the COVID-19 estimates. The last fund we looked at was the Water and Wastewater Fund. Here, we again applied that 10% delinquency rate to. We took off the interest revenue, because we budgeted that, but we are now allocating that to the general fund, so we wanted to just recognize that. We did recognize about $2.5 million in savings, based on the system enhancements and some of the other items that Martha was able to postpone. So we still anticipate this fund. In the 30-day scenario, to have a net income, by the time you get to the 90-day scenario, that number goes to a net loss. That would have to be utilized out of the fund balance. It would still leave the fund balance at a little over $11 million, even in the 90-day Then we wanted to take a look at those outside agencies that we support with the Sales Tax Economic Development Fund and other funds. Some of these come out of the general fund. These were, any of these that have specific dollar amounts were all approved in the 2020 budget. Ambux for the Skyfire Municipal Band, OCCK, Salina Airport Authority. We supply maintenance to both Salina Community Theater and Salina Arts Center, SCEDO, Salina Downtown Inc., Salina Media Connection, and Visit Salina. And I provided that information there for you, as just some detailed information on what we actually approved in the budget for those particular items. I also provided information, detailed information. One of the questions that came up was on the 40% franchise amount that Salina Media Connection gets. I ran the numbers for that. Over the past three years, it's come in right around $210,000 a year for their 40% of that cable franchise fee. So, Dennis, go ahead.
Mike, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Hodges.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I just wanted to jump in, this is Commissioner Hodges. While I understand that we have specific contracts with each of these entities, have we reached out to any of them to talk about potential reductions? Commissioner Franz, last week, had suggested some across-the-board cuts of, say, 10%. And while I know we have contracts with each of these agencies, have we had any preliminary discussions with them in terms of our ability to, you know, fund their requests?
Mike's Craig here. I think that probably falls on my plate, and I have not yet. We've been working on the personnel side of things and this revised budget projection. And just to be clear, some have more formal agreements than others. Some of them are just a budget allocation, so it varies a little bit, but much like we did the contract review as related to capital improvements, I'm envisioning that we'll need to do the same for these and any other big-ticket vendors that we might have, and then I'll need to make contact with each of them.
Okay, because, I mean, I, like Commissioner Franz noted in his statement last week, I think that there's going to be a lot of hardship and a lot of misery that's spread around, and I think that, you know, everybody's going to need to shoulder their part of that. And then, I did, something I didn't see that he had referenced in his remarks last week, and maybe is going to come up under City of Salina Vendors later in his presentation, is our legal services budget. Is that something that we're going to take a deeper dive into under vendors, or is this considered as some sort of outside agency contract?
I think it would be a vendor. I don't know that we're prepared to go into detail on any vendors today, but one of the things that finance is working on is kind of identifying from largest to smallest the vendors we do recurring business with.
Okay, thank you.
So then on some of the maintenance contracts, I just wanted to provide you with the number, the dollars that we actually are spending on these contracts. For example, Memorial Hall, we spend about $14,000 on maintenance of the excess TV building, and about $35,000 on the Memorial Hall building, for a total of about $49,000. on the Memorial Hall building, for a total of about $49,000 on that building. These are numbers from 2019. And you can see a pretty big chunk of those are utilities and some maintenance and custodial cost. And the other two that I wanted to provide, hope these are kind of small, but I apologize, are the Salina Arts Center. In 2019, we provided almost $28,000 in support. And the Salina Community Theater, we provided $119,000 in support for those two facilities.
And Mike Scragg, just to clarify, quite a bit of that is staff, custodial labor that we provide them, although we do also, and, and energy, as Ms. Pack mentioned previously. And then we also have maintenance responsibility that just fluctuates from year to year, particularly at the community theater. So not necessarily saying that that is something to change or that we can make an immediate savings on, but I know in past budgets that it has, has been a topic of conversation for you as commissioners, as something that's not intuitive that you're aware that we do, but those are services that we provide to outside agencies.
Commissioner Franz, what's the subcontract for this Salina Community Theater? Is that a, do we contract with a private maintenance agency to take care of the building? It's quite a lot, 55,000.
I'm wondering if that wasn't part of their HVAC.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too. We, we had to do, this past year, they had roofing and HVAC work, and I think that's what that.
Okay, so this might be like a project expense at one time, not a continuing, okay? I looked at that and thought, well, that's, you know, a janitorial contract or something. And you know, it's, you know.
Mayor Hoppick here. Haven't we talked about they'd had some work done that had to go back in and be redone? And that was at our expense?
Yeah, Mike Scragg here. We, they had punch list items from their last renovation that didn't get completed. And then a few years later, it started to crop up as a maintenance item that we had to address. I believe that's what it is, but I'd have to go back and check.
Commissioner Hodges here, would these be some of the contracts that we take another look at in terms of, you know, reviewing our outside agency support? Will we be taking a look at the contracts that we have with the Arts Center and the Community Theater?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then you'd asked about vendors in general. We are working on identifying these. At first glance, we think there's probably over 1,000, but we are running numbers to see what those biggest numbers look like and hopefully be able to bring some information back to you at some point in the future. The next.
Commissioner Hodges here.
Yep.
Thank you, Debbie. And I'm sorry to be repetitive here, but I would really like to include taking a deeper dive on our legal expenses. I know that we did, we covered it last year in the 70th session, which I reviewed prior to today, but we've probably spent close to $3 million in the last five years on legal. And that's, I mean, any time that we're getting up to $5, $600, $700,000 in a year on the single item, I think it's worth, worth it all, unless it takes us closer, unless it's the, seeing if we're doing it effectively and efficiently as we can. So I would like to include a request that we take a deeper dive and see what we can do to drilling this expense down.
Okay. The next three slides, I will apologize, I believe yours all say 30-day at the top, but they're actually, that's what happens when you're working at 9 o'clock on Friday night. They should be 30, 60, 90 subsequently. And this just basically gives you that breakdown by month. But what it also gives you at the bottom, in the very bottom row where it says cumulative net income or loss, that gives you month by month what we anticipate the general fund to do in 2020, based on our three scenarios. So in the 30-day scenario, we wouldn't anticipate that the general fund go into a net loss stance until December. In the 60-day scenario, we would anticipate that to be the same. We wouldn't hit that net loss until December. And in the 90-day scenario, we would, it would be December also. So we were just trying to show you as we move through these numbers and how we collect our revenue and pay our expenses. That's kind of where it's all going to fall apart is at the very end.
So Mike Scragg again, I asked Debbie and Tara to prepare that. In part, as we talk about how this might play out in terms of timing and we have to, when we have to make decisions, I wanted to have a sense of what our cash flow might look like. And that's not to say that we wait till December to then realize that we get 2 million plus in the hole, but it could at least indicate that we've got some time to see how the stay-at-home order plays out, see how the economy recovers. And, you know, what that might mean is we can put measures in place that mitigate that to some degree, and then we may have to carry over into the 2021 budget, additional saving measures, whether that's work share program or, or other things to try to recover. But I really wanted to have a sense for my own benefit as well as yours, just from a pure cash flow standpoint, how this might play out. I would tell you, this is all predicated on inter-fund transfers happening this month or next, rather than end of the year.
Right.
From a, I think we've just historically done them at the end of the year, but we have assumed for this purpose that we do them sooner rather than later.
Commissioner Franz, I would point out from the cash flow standpoint, we are in a deficit from June on in almost all, all scenarios in terms of a current month deficit. So we are in decline beginning at that point, and that's largely an artifact of the way property taxes are distributed.
Correct. And that cumulative net income is for the 2020 fiscal year. So it's not, it wouldn't be until, you know, December that we would have to spend into reserves, but then we would have to do it significantly. So we would want to have planned before mid-November, but it might at least give us some time to observe and gather a little bit more data.
And then the last slide is really a summary, and this is where the decision point comes in. The negatives in the, in the general fund, those are the net losses in the 30, 60, and 90-day scenario. The sales tax fund, those are the net incomes. And the net column is truly if we, if we transferred what was in the sales tax into the general fund, what would be the deficit that we're looking for to recover?
So Mike Scragg again, this is the decision point that I called out previously. You know, if we, if we treat them separately, with all the work that we've done so far and the savings we've identified, we end up with the sales tax fund balance going up and the general fund still struggling to maintain its own. And I do think that is very much a policy decision for you. That's why we gave you the ballot language earlier. My recommendation would be that the, by formal action, we can prepare that for you, that we authorize use of the, the savings we've identified in the sales tax fund to backstop the general fund. You know, if you look at the ballot language, it certainly, it did contemplate property tax stabilization, and it certainly didn't contemplate a pandemic and what we're dealing with at the moment. As we've said, tough times call for tough measures. This is, admittedly, a redirection of those funds, but in the interest of keeping our services and our fund balances and our finances in order, seems like that might be the thing to do at the moment.
Commissioner Ryan here. I would agree with that recommendation. The language of that ballot wasn't that far away, far away from the last recession, so I think it was clearly intended for this kind of times.
Other comments or questions from commissioners on that?
Commissioner Franz, I'm not going to disagree with the recommendation in full, but I do think that's something I'd rather keep in our hip pocket a little further down the road until we know a little bit more. I have a fundamental concern that typically we're not into the recession yet in terms of things we can actually see, but typically it takes from two to three years to pull out of a recession. So I'm thinking that we're looking at 2020 now and trying to kind of deal with the immediate issues, but I am very concerned about what 2021 might look like, because we're going to go into 2021 in a losing position. And so I would just as soon hold that kind of transfer in abeyance until we see a little bit more about what we might, what we might have to do and to see if there are critical kinds of capital items that might come up that we need to use that sales tax fund for.
Yeah. Mike Scragg, I would fully agree and acknowledge that. I mean, with some of the things we've done, we've put off, we can't just not do, especially as relates to capital improvements and vehicles and equipment and those type of things. And if we can get ourselves a little bit of time to get some data behind this and some time behind this, we can, this can be one of those decision points. But if we know that that's at least in our hip pocket, that helps us make some of the other decisions we have to make about staffing and otherwise.
Commissioner Hodges here. I don't, I don't have a problem with the transfer to the, the general fund. My question would be, you know, given that our general fund is going to decrease significantly this year in our likelihood, what will that do to our future bond rating and any, and any borrowing that we're going to have in the future? Fond council is looking at, say, a general fund that balances that, you know, like $3 million instead of at the, you know, the 7.5 that we had earlier.
Mike Scragg, really good question. One of the things we haven't shared yet that will be part of the bond conversation is our bond rating that we just went through held the bond rating. We did not get downgraded, even though there was some conversation about the need for just a downgrade nationwide, given the pandemic. And I don't want to be overly optimistic, but at the end of the day, if you look at the 90-day scenario, if the assumption is that we make the transfer from the sales tax fund to the general fund, in that 90-day scenario, that, that negative of 2 million is what I've been treating as the gap that we still need to fill. If we fill that gap, then our general fund reserve balance stays the same. Correct, Ms. Pack?
Right.
Correct. So, you know, and, you know, if we don't, obviously, it's going to go down, but on the assumption that we do nothing more to fill that $2 million gap, then that's what would hit the general fund. Part of what we're talking, will be talking about with the next agenda item in terms of staffing and, you know, I do think, we've had a conversation previously about having to take a hard look at the way we do things and what the new normal might be and what the future might be. I think, I think we still try to close that gap, and whether it's in 2020 or it extends into 2021, I think our goal remains. Well, number one, as we have more time, we can figure out whether our projections are correct and whether it's 2 million or above or below that number. And then over time, we continue to try to, to close that gap.
Commissioner Davis, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I think it's all been, been said. I, I think the two commissioners at the end table have summarized our options. I think it's, we know we have fluid options out in front of us and, you know, knowing what options we have depending on how things, what, three or four months, we can make a decision.
Mayor Hoppick here. Talking about the, you know, the transfer, it's not something we really have to do today. It's something we can do between now and, and the end of the year as we see necessary. Is there a reason to do it right now, Mike? Or would there be a, I mean, do you just want, I guess from us, do you just want us philosophically saying we, we agree with that?
Right.
I don't know if I want to see us transfer it now, not knowing where we're at and that we need it, but I think philosophically, if we can give you, yes, we are okay with that, is that sufficient enough for today?
That would be terrific. Mike Scragg here. As I said, we've got two different approaches. And you're absolutely right. We can look at it over time and see what needs to be done. But if it was a hard keep them separated, then, you know, we're talking about 3 million-plus gap that we have to try to address in the general fund. So that helps from the planning perspective. We can continue to monitor and, and provide you with information. The other thing I would like to touch on, and I think I mentioned it before, but we do have reserves. We've struggled to get to the reserve balances that we are. We, our reserve balances aren't necessarily where best management practices say they should be, and we've made significant progress in the last few years. But for those, whether they're citizens or employees listening at home wondering, well, now it's raining, you saved it for a rainy day, it's raining, why not spend it now? We don't know how long it's going to rain. You know, the reserves are that other cushion if, if our financial projections or the pandemic and, and the continued stay-at-home orders play out differently than we might be assuming. If we, if we dive straight into reserves and spend that down, we've left ourselves no room to adapt to unforeseen circumstances. And just in the normal course of things, we've been struggling for, I'd say, almost a decade to try to get our reserve balances where we'd like them to be.
Mayor Hoppick here. Would it be beneficial for, I know there's no resolution or anything, would it be beneficial if we had a, a motion to, to approve that philosophy, I guess?
Well, Mike Scragg here. Actually, I think you've given me enough for today. We can, we can talk from a financial standpoint and kind of a, this isn't necessarily a budget amendment. I don't know. We'll figure out how to kind of formalize that, representing what you've said. Staff completely agrees. We're not saying tomorrow we need to transfer those funds. We just need, from a financial planning standpoint, to make sure we're all on the same page.
So Mayor Hoppick here, it may be that you put something together for us to, to approve that, and then with, with approval, that you come back and notify the commission when that's necessary. Do any other commissioners have any other thoughts on that?
Commissioner Davis, some clear, you're, we would not be giving blanket approval to do it in the future if you need to. We're saying you'd stop the comeback should that day arise, and then we take action. But now we're just saying, yes, it's a viable option down the road.
Commissioner Franz, I guess I have conflicting emotions about this, conflicting feelings. The, you know, I, I struggle with the idea that somehow grabbing that reserve out of the sales tax fund is just a little bit too easy. And I still think that the commitments that we made in the ballot language are important to try to maintain, and that using that for general fund operations, be it for tax stabilization or whatever purpose, should kind of be at the bottom of the list. You know, it, and recognizing the degree of difficulty it is to build the general fund balance back up. Last time it took us, it was about 10 years, from about 2011 or '12, when it bottomed out in the last recession, to just this year. So, you know, I, what I'd like to do is defer the decision until November or thereabouts so that we can still make the decision for this year if need be. But I am really reluctant to take that path at this point.
Mike Scragg here. I think we're going to have to have more conversations, you know, between now and November. But we, we have different data points that we've talked to you about, and they'll become available at different times. I see this as an ongoing financial conversation we're going to have to have about how, what's revenue look like? What are our expenditures look like? What have we done? What more can we do? And then I have no problem saying it's, it's not a decision you made today. It's something that you'd have to act on in the future, and we'll just have to continue to report out.
Commissioner Ryan here. I, I think the minutes will be clear what our feelings were on this subject now. And I, I don't know if there's a point in time that'll be realized where we need to make a decision, but I think we just, we stay as nimble as possible until we see how, where things need to go.
Financially nimble, I like that.
I think that's prudent. Staff can certainly support that.
Yeah.
Not that I'm endorsing your decision. We can staff to that direction you just gave us.
Mayor Hoppick, I think that Mayor, or Commissioner Franz is right in that we have other options to try to reduce expenses and so on and so forth. But I think one of the things we want to do is, is protect that sales tax fund also and not spend down on it any more than we have to, obviously, because I think Commissioner Hodges made a good point, and we need to protect our bond rating also. I think that's very important for the future also. So there's a, there's a balancing act we're going to have to do here. And again, as we said several weeks ago when we had our first budget discussion, it was, it was the first of many difficult discussions we were going to have, so.
And not to be repetitive, but, you know, one, one thing And, and not to be repetitive, but, you know, one, one thing that we can't lose sight of is capital improvement, or equipment, vehicles and equipment are outdated. We've struggled for years to, with the funding that we do have in the sales tax fund to get ahead of our equipment. Deferring it one year is concerning, but we can't continue to do that. Um, you know, we've placed emphasis on public safety equipment, understandably so, but parks, mowers, and, and maintenance equipment have fallen way behind. So we, this is not a shift that we can sustain. This is definitely, you know, a measure we have to take in response to the pandemic if it becomes necessary.
Okay. Uh, Mike, uh, do we want to check to see if there's any one from the public that would like to comment on this? And Commissioner Hodges, did you have any other comments? I'm sorry to.
No, I'm good. Thank you for allowing me to make those comments.
Okay. Thank you.
If anyone listening wishes to speak, they need to press star nine. We have about a dozen and a half people, but I don't see anyone indicating they wish to speak.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to 7.2. And by the way, thank you very much, Debbie and your staff for, like we said, they were, what was it, nine o'clock that Friday night when they put all, got all this together. So appreciate your efforts.
It was ulterior motive.
Didn't want to work this weekend.
We did get a weekend out of that, so that was good. Um, we're going to transition, I believe, from Debbie to our HR director.
We got one resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I jumped to item ahead.
Item 7.2, resolution number 20-7827, amending the 2020 to 2024 capital improvement program and giving the city manager the authority to reduce part-time salary expenditures as available.
Ms. Pack.
Thank you again. Um, as you recall, back in December, when we approved our resolution for the capital improvement plan, that included several projects and purchases for the sub-CIP. We started this conversation back on March 30th about how we can cut different projects into different capital items. We brought back last week, so this is a follow-up to our conversation last week, where we specifically went through item by item, project by project, and you gave us some more direct, um, direction on those items. So I included in the, in the staff report, a table that included the list of projects or purchases and the direction that you had given us. Some of them are not to, to not do the projects, but to possibly, um, find a different source of funding for those projects. So I, we provided those in the staff report. Um, also, back in August, when we adopted our, our budget, we had approximately $970,000 in the general fund in part-time salaries. We presented the possibility of some savings on that on March 30th. Staff is recommending that City Commission authorize the city manager to reduce spending in part-time salaries. Uh, this, the, uh, this particular amendment to the sub-CIP creates a savings in the sales tax fund of approximately $1.7 million and postpones spending in the amount of about $1.1 million. These changes add about $153,000 of expenditures to the special gas tax fund, uh, which may require a budget revision later, depending on the other spending in that fund. And it postpones about $125,000 in cost in that fund. The utility fund budget is being reduced by $1.3 million to $516,000 with these changes. Potential change, savings in the general fund as a result of the part-time salaries are approximately $880,000 with benefits. Staff has identified the following options for City Commission: approve resolution 20-7827, amending the 2020 through 2024 capital improvement program, and approve giving the city manager authority to reduce spending in part-time salary expenditures as previously budgeted in 2020. Approve the resolution with amendments as you might seem appropriate. Postpone consideration of the resolution or vote to deny the resolution. Staff recommends option number one. I stand for any questions.
Mike's Greg, one, one clarification. Um, Ms. Pack reported savings with, as associated with the part-time salaries of $880,000. And we, we report fees and charges, um, reduced revenue by $928,000. That's a combination of the fees that would go to these programs, as well as other fees, um, that we have budgeted to see a decrease. So we kind of covered it already in the prior conversation, but, um, we, we have a corresponding decrease in fees, but in net savings, when all is said and done, by the part-time staffing reductions.
Commissioner Hodges here. Most of these projects look familiar from last week, but there were a couple that when I was just flipping through the presentation from last week, there were a few utility fund projects that I didn't remember seeing, control and the safety and, and, um, the water power, maybe.
Those were projects, those were projects that we reported, sorry, those were projects that, go ahead.
I'm sorry, did I, did I miss those?
Those were projects that we reported on the water, wastewater system enhancements budget. Um, it would have been on page 30.
Right.
30 of last week's, um, presentation.
They, they were in table form, rather than each one being its own, um, slide and discussion item. So there was a.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you.
And Mayor Hoppick, and I remember those, but I, I see we, did we discuss the gas line? I know that you have that as an asterisk to the, to the South Water Treatment Plant.
It was an, actually, on that same list, it was an added item.
Okay, I missed, okay, that was the one I missed. I thought maybe we, we're just adding it back here, because I knew we had the, the water.
Right. It wasn't originally budgeted in the, on the original, um, system enhancements. It was added.
In fact, I missed that one as well.
That was the only, so. Okay, any other questions or comments for Ms. Pack? If not, Mike, is there anyone from the public that would like to weigh in on this subject?
There's any caller that wishes to, uh, address the commission, they need to press star nine now. And I do not see anyone.
Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the commission.
Commissioner Davis, I move to approve resolution 20-7827, amending the 2020 to 2024 capital improvement program and approve giving the city manager authority to reduce spending in part-time salary expenditures previously budgeted in 2020.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
Mayor Hoppick here. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 20-7827, amending the 2020, 2024 capital improvement program. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Again, thank you, staff, for your work on that. Okay, that brings us to 7.3. And I believe we're going to change out personnel here.
Mayor, if I could ask Mr. Schrag a question about the postponed pay, pay plan review? Um, would it be, um, given the situation that we have, uh, would it be more likely we'll look at that a full year from now, when maybe there's a new normal? Or might we try to take that in sooner than later?
My thinking is we'd probably be looking at that in a year. Just, I don't, as we look at our peer communities that are dealing with similar circumstances, uh, I don't, I don't know what they're going to do in terms of pay rates and, and adjustments. And until that dust settles, the pay plan probably is pretty uncertain in terms of what information they might be able to gather and what they might be able to report back. So Natalie Fisher, our HR director, is going to present on this item. Um, I'm going to apologize in advance for the number of slides, and I'll take the blame for all the personnel manual stuff. We, we had a conversation, and, and I felt like we at least ought to give you the personnel ma, manual language that was applicable. It's kind of background information that we have to take into account, we being staff, as we try to implement some of this. So the intention is not at all to read you every one of these slides. Um, well, Natalie will try to touch on the highlighted items and a few other pertinent points. But, you know, as we talk about furloughs and, and reductions and, and staffing and, and just the mechanics of some of that, and then we try to overlay, uh, the state and federal programs, it gets pretty complicated pretty quick. And we wanted to be sure to at least give you the background information. The other thing I would tell you is that into Friday afternoon, evening, we are still trying to decipher, um, how the federal regulations were being interpreted and how the state might implement them. And, and that's still kind of a, uh, an evolving conversation. We, we do feel like we're getting some clarity, and it's starting to come together there. Um, and then lastly, um, I, I spent the weekend kind of rumin, ruminating on recommendations and decision points. So I have quite a bit of additional talking points or, or comments to provide when, when Ms. Fisher gets done as we try to work our way through this, uh, this issue. And then the very first slide, uh, those are kind of my bullet points, so I'll, I'll cover them rather than ask Ms. Fisher to. And that is, and some of the, some of the thought process I've been going through, and I think you probably have too, or, or should think about, is, is this a rainy day that we're going to get behind us quickly? Or is this a new normal? Most likely, it's probably a little bit of both. Um, we've had conversations for a while now about our budget and our lack of growth and our struggles, whether it's, uh, reserve balance or pay raises, those type of things. So this just kind of brings all that conversation to a head. Um, is the expectation that we're going to completely fund the financial gap in 2020? Or could that, uh, we extend our efforts at financial recovery into 2021 or beyond? One of the things, um, that we'll touch on as part of this presentation is that the work share program that's available from the state of Kansas is a 12-month, uh, program. So that creates an opportunity to implement, uh, maybe in phases or over a, a longer period of time. And then, um, do we want to take a staggered approach as, as COVID-19 continues to unfold? Unfortunately, and I'm repeating myself, but unfortunately, some of our data, sales tax in particular, which is probably the, the most significant, uh, concern, comes in two months in arrears. So to say that we're taking a staggered approach, uh, gets a little difficult when, when the sales tax comes in that far behind. But with the April stay-at-home order, uh, being in effect, and, um, sales tax data becoming available for, uh, by the end of June for April, we would then have some sense of what the April stay-at-home order looked like. We'd also have a sense of whether it got extended, the stay-at-home order got extended into May. Uh, we might also be able to extrapolate a little bit what the mass gathering, uh, restriction impacts had at the end of March, and also then figure out whether we have mass gathering limitations that were extended or, or, uh, in effect. That all starts to help flesh out that picture a little bit more, helps it put a, a response together. And, you know, maybe we can be nimble, as we said, financially as we go forward. Having said all that, you know, the conversation we had last week and the directive that staff left with was, you know, we do, we, we can't just, uh, hope for the best and do nothing now and, and wait till the dust settles and then try to react. We do need to be in front of this. And staff wholeheartedly agrees. And so some of the conversation was everything from, uh, furloughs and layoffs and reductions in force and voluntary pay reductions and mandatory pay reductions. And, and at that time, we didn't know a whole lot about, um, how the federal government might apply the unemployment and the added unemployment benefits, as well as the work share program. And I think we've got a lot of good information or a lot more detail in that regard. So with that, I'll, uh, turn it over to Ms. Fisher and.
Mayor, if I could ask one question, and excuse me if I'm naive, but I think it'll help me understand all these different things. Are, are these the various programs we're going to hear about, can you do them, do they overlap? Or are we looking at one thing versus another?
They, they do overlap, Mike's Greg. Um, some of them do overlap. Some of them have different timeframes that, you know, they overlap for a while, and then one end expires and another continues. And so, um, it, it is very much a, a combination. Um, and I, you know, in the interest of full disclosure, we, we put a lot of effort in as Natalie, myself, and Greg, and Aaron Martin from Clark Mice. But, you know, the, the example of how emergency paid sick leave was going to be applied is a good one. We read it. We, our initial interpretation was it was going to be available to our employees, and we need to make provision for it. So we felt like we were ahead of the curve. After we had UAC, then the interpretations came in to the contrary. So we kind of reacted to that and brought you a change. And then ultimately, our initial interpretation is how the department, the Secretary of Labor, uh, implemented the program when they had their 15 days to put out guidance. So I say all that because we're doing our best to gather what information we can and, and make strategic decisions. Um, and Mayor Hoppick and I have had multiple conversations where I've said, I'd love to call the, the Kansas unemployment program, but they got 1.6 million phone calls on Monday of last week alone. I, I assume they're not going to take my call, or, or I'll be on hold for an inordinate amount of time. So we're, we're doing our best to, to gather the information and put a plan together that's, you know, strategic on the front end and, you know, strategic over time and takes advantage of the programs to our best interests. The, the other thing, I'm getting a little ahead of Natalie's presentation at this point. But, you know, I've said that a lot of the federal funding, uh, is targeted at COVID-19 related expenses and, and precludes municipalities from, and taking advantage of it. The one program that does seem to not exclude municipalities and might be a way for us to take advantage of a program to the benefit of our employees and our bottom line is that, uh, F-P-U-C program. Um, and we'll, I'll have to be reminded of the acronym when we get into the slides, but it's the $600 a week of additional benefit. If we can strategically, you know, make that available to our employees and, uh, we've assessed it correctly, then they may be left whole, and we may have an opportunity to, to realize some budgetary, uh, savings for, for our bottom line. So that's a long answer to your question, but a lot of programs, uh, they all have different eligibility requirements, different administration, and they definitely overlap. And that's part of what we've been trying to sort out.
So we don't necessarily exclude ourselves from one because we participate in another. We've got 30, all our different departments and divisions. If we, it's very complicated, but if it's a math problem, we can find our way through it, maybe.
Uh, that, yeah, that's the hope as we get to the end. And I, I give you some talking points. Part of it's going to be, if you can give me some general direction of how aggressive you want to be and what you want to try to accomplish, then we will end up having to sit down with every department and go through every budget and put a plan together.
Thanks. Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Natalie Fisher, Director of Human Resources. Um, I am going to, fortunately for you, go through these slides pretty quickly. By all means, if there's points of clarification or questions that come up, as I'm breezing through several of them, please stop me. It really was provided just so you have some background information. Um, uh, let's see here. So personnel manual provisions. There's a lot of information here, but I just wanted to make sure you had an understanding. We reference these types of employees frequently, but we have classified full-time. Those are employees that, by our definition, require that an average of 40 or more hours per week on a regular basis, regular year-round basis has worked. Uh, our definition of classified part-time requires more than 20, but less than 28 per week. Regular part-time requires less than 20 hours per week. The difference between classified and regular part-time, the regular part-time are not benefit eligible, primarily in terms of health insurance. They also receive a very small amount of vacation accrual and no sick leave. And then to follow up, just how we define our temporary seasonal and intermittent employees. We have a definition for our pay plan. And we define compensation. I apologize about some of these, uh, what I'm going to call blue bubbles. They were fine until we went to print, and then the formatting didn't cooperate and shifted them all around. So it was meant to be helpful to highlight. And in some of these areas, it may be more of a distraction. But again, if you have questions, please One of the things, um, outside of reading all of the different specifications, classifications, everything that governs our pay plan, I would just like to note that we had talked about a pay plan study, which obviously we've parked for the time being indefinitely. Um, our last pay plan was conducted in 2006, and we implemented that in 2007, June of 2007. Our last pay plan was conducted in 2006, and we implemented that in 2007, June of 2007. Unfortunately, shortly after we had implemented that pay plan, we did have some turmoil in the economy, and for seven years, between 2009 and 2019, we were not able to offer cost of living adjustments because of budget, and two of those years, also no merit increases. That's part of the problem, I believe, why we have fallen behind in some of the areas as far as starting paying competing with the public sector, but at some point, when we are able to conduct the pay plan study, we'll have a better idea of that. But again, just a little background and the historical perspective. Some of our positions have been requiring us to go higher into the minimum range when we don't have compression issues, when we don't have multiple people within the same classification where it causes problems. We have been forced to try to get those individuals to join our organization. We've had to go higher into the pay plan than, or into those minimum pay grades than what we would like. And I guess that's, kind of sums up where we're at with the pay plan. During the budget process, you might recall that you have approved, well, I'm going to refer to as schedules within the pay plan. These have been divided up to classified, public safety, and executive senior management. Again, these are the framework that we place employees on that provides for the minimum and the maximum pay for each one of those positions on those schedules. Jumping into hours of work and overtime, the only thing that I would note here, most of our employees are on a 40-hour work week, Monday through Sunday, overtime paid after the 40th hour, with the exception of public safety. We take advantage of the 7K exemption, which allows us to look at a longer period of time for the individuals in those sworn public safety positions. Currently, we operate with a 14-day window, so the overtime for sworn police and fire is paid after the 80th hour for police officers, and after the 106th hour for sworn fire. As noted, we may look at reducing overtime by extending that. You can pick your number of days per period. 21 days is an option, 28 days is an option. Just for example, to give you an idea of what that looks like, if we go to a 28-day FLSA period, overtime would be paid to sworn police after the 171st hour or after the 212th Not making that recommendation, just, again, providing a framework for understanding. We believe we've also been, I guess we need to get caught up here, we've also been pretty conservative in how we have approached overtime throughout our organization. For individuals that, well, for all of our individuals, when there's leave time calculated into the equation, into the formula for overtime, it's not considered hours worked. So if there's any vacation, or sick, or a personal day, or holiday being paid to individuals, those hours are removed from the equation, and it has to be hours worked before the overtime is paid. When individuals are called in, they will receive a minimum of two hours of pay, but depending upon where they're at in the week, and oftentimes, depending upon if schedules can be offered to offset that, they're not automatically paid two hours of overtime in those situations.
And that was a policy change in response to the recession in 2008, as we looked at our finances then and our policies that changed in December of 2008.
Also given background on separation pay and what is paid out to employees in the And then also--
Can we, I'm sorry, can we back up to the separation pay? The accrued vacation is paid out, which I think is probably expected and required. Sick leave is paid out at one-third of the accumulated balance. So if an employee leaves in good standing, they're compensated for one-third the hours that they have in the bank for sick leave. So I think we'll get to it in a little bit, but we have some sizable payouts annually.
As a form of compensation, the city also offers longevity pay when it is allowed for in the budget. This year, I believe it's on my next slide to give you an idea of what that budget looks like, but I'll back up to explain. It is based on number of months of service after someone is with our organization for five years. For example, a five-year employee would be eligible to receive $210, 35-year, $1,470. I will note that we have three individuals with 41 years of service. And currently, our 2020 budget for longevity is $211,000, 211,699. General fund, 157,400, and non-general fund, 54,286.
Mayor Hoppick here. When you say budgeted, is that set aside? Is that in an accrual account? What does that mean?
It is budgeted at the department level, so it's just a budgeted line item--
Okay.
--for lack of a better way to describe it.
So it's not, there's not actual dollars that have been set aside in a pool or anything? It's just budgeted that that's, we come out of whatever fund?
Yeah, Mike Scragg here. It's budgeted like any other line item expense in the budget, so as Ms. Fisher said, by department, we're accounting for the number of employees and the longevity pay that they would receive, but it's not a separate fund balance of any kind. It's just an annual expenditure that--
That may or may not come out--
Right. We've budgeted for in the past, but any given budget, and as it indicates here, at the city manager's discretion, it may or may not be provided. And I guess I would also say that all the savings assumptions that we presented to you so far don't have that number backed out yet.
Commissioner Franz, did we pay longevity pay last year?
Yes.
We did, okay. I couldn't, I wasn't here, so.
Yep, I think we have, I don't think we've ever not, have we?
Not in the last 13 years.
Not since 1996.
Moving on to vacation, a little framework for how vacation works. Employees have either a 250 or 350-hour cap, unless there's a grandfathered balance, of when we had a policy change. Wanted to note when that changed. I might come across that. But we do require that employees use 50% of their accrual over the course of a year, and they do have a cap, so it's a two-part policy. Individuals do have the ability to do a buyback, to request the city buys that back when budget allows. I gave a little framework, although it's extremely small, to show how individuals accrue. It's accrued by pay period. As individuals' length of service increases, the accrual slightly increases well. I mentioned the grandfathered caps. One thing I did want to note is we currently have 23 employees that still have a grandfathered cap. I will say, once they bring that balance in the event of more usage than anticipated or intentionally used, or a buyback, and someone brings their cap from a grandfather down to the threshold of either 250 or 350, then that becomes their new cap. So every time they would bring down their balance at year-end, then they reset their cap to a lower amount. But we currently do have 23 employees that still have grandfathered caps. Sick leave is pretty straightforward. Just to summarize, classified full-time employees accrue 96 hours for 12 days per year. Shift firefighters earn 134.4 hours or 5.6 days per year. An outline of what qualifies for use for sick leave. And a lot of language that governs that, including the maximum amount, how that happens over the course of a year. Again, didn't plan on reading that to you. Happy to answer questions, just wanted to make sure you had an understanding of what's available to employees. As noted earlier, when individuals leave our employ, as long as they have five years of consecutive uninterrupted years, and they leave in good standing, payment of one-third of their accumulated sick leave hours are paid out at that current hourly rate.
And just as a clarification, Mike Scragg again, when we changed the vacation policy, we had to acknowledge the status of all the employees at that time, and that's why we created a two-tier structure where if you're above the cap, we monitor that, and then the policy change is effective going forward. If we were to change the sick leave buyback, I think the same approach would be applied, so employees with a balance would still be entitled to payout as our current policy provides. Any changes we might make would apply going forward, so they wouldn't represent an immediate cost savings that could help address our current financial question. But as we talk about a new normal, those are the kind of things that we probably need
And just as a reminder, we've talked about this over the past few weeks, as far as a form of sick leave advancement. We do have that available, as well as the amendment that was taken to allow just leave advancement in general for things related to COVID-19. In terms of other leave, we do have a provision for a leave of absence or a form of emergency And we did consider the added COVID-19 pay to be this, along with the two types of leaves that were added by the Families First Act, including the emergency paid sick leave and the emergency family medical leave, both of those providing a form of paid leave for items specific to COVID-19. Just a note, as Mistress Scragg said earlier, on the guidance that we received after the action was taken by the commission to add 80 hours for those full-time employees, the Department of Labor, when they had a different idea on the interpretation than what was originally coming out, they came back and said things like the stay-at-home order, shelter in place, those things did qualify for the emergency paid sick leave, so many of our employees in that full-time capacity would have up to 160 hours of leave available between the City of Salina COVID pay and the emergency paid sick leave.
So, Mike Scragg, just to clarify, the initial concern was that a quarantine or an isolation order was very specific, and a stay-at-home order did not rise to that level. The Secretary of Labor, US Secretary of Labor's guidance provided language that quarantine or isolation orders include a broad range of governmental orders, including others that advise some or all citizens to shelter in place, stay at home, quarantine or otherwise restrict their own mobility. So their guidance took it a step further and provided additional clarity, and so that then makes the 80 hours of emergency paid sick leave in the Families First Coronavirus Response Act available for a stay-at-home order, as well as the 80 hours of COVID leave that we created for a combined 160 hours, and then we also have the 120 hours of leave advancement on the books. So if you're a City of Salina employee, you are in better shape than we might have thought before the Secretary of Labor guidance came out, with 160 hours of leave and 120 hours of leave advancement being available.
Commissioner Davis, question for sick leave advancement. Are health insurance premiums paid for the employee while they're on sick leave advancement?
When they are using the sick leave advancement, they are borrowing against future accruals, so yes, they continue to receive the pay for however many hours that they had requested to be used to cover their absence, and it's as if they had those hours in their leave bank to provide them income and to cover any benefit expenses.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. All right, so transitioning to separation and reinstatement, these, as a note, are the current personnel manual provisions regarding reductions in force or layoffs. So the city manager may separate any employee without prejudice because of lack of funds, curtailment of work, reorganization, or reassignment. Currently, our policy for the reduction in workforce or layoff does ask that we give employees, or does require that we give employees at least two weeks' advance notice, and there's also a pecking order established within our policy.
Commissioner Hodgins here for a quick question. So our prior action was that we established 80 hours of pay leave, and we had the sick leave to be advanced, but now with the Department of Labor guidance, all employees have access to 150 hours of pay leave, plus an additional 120 hours to be advanced. I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Mike Scragg here. The Department of Labor guidance relates to 80 hours of emergency paid sick leave that was provided in the act, and so their guidance is specific to that 80, and we also have the 80 that we created on the books, so that's how you get to 160.
Okay, thank you. I was, I was-- Okay, thank you for that answer.
And then, one other clarification, there are dollar limits on the daily payout of emergency paid sick leave on the federal side, so those would apply, and I believe it's $511 a day. We cannot, the act precludes an employer from requiring that an employee use their leave balances first, so the employee would have the option to use our COVID leave balance that we created, or the emergency paid sick leave that's created by the act. They'll have to elect that, and then we'll administer it accordingly.
Okay, just so I can make sure, Commissioner Hodgins, just so I can make sure I understand this. The first 80 hours, that leave is available full pay for the way that it has been contemplated in the early, and then it would be a matter of choosing to have the 80 hours that funded at about $500 a day from the Department of Labor from the Carrier Act, or proceeding to using their vacation and sick leave in lieu of doing that? Am I understanding that correctly? Or can they use the city leave, then access the Department of Labor leave, and then access the additional hours?
Yes to all that, I think. They, you know, the resolution that we passed talked about supplementing the leave provided by the act, so they, so within the limits of the act, we could work with them to supplement the leave they're drawing, and they could elect which leave they choose first. I think most people would probably go the route that you described, but we have had individual employees approach us about all times-- individual employees approach us about alternatives that they prefer for some reason, and we would need to accommodate them.
Natalie Fisher, oh, go ahead. Natalie Fisher, one other clarification. In addition to the daily cap of 511, depending upon why the individual might be requesting and qualifying for the emergency paid sick leave for care of someone else, or care of someone else specifically relating to criteria defined in the Families First Act to do with COVID-19, or to provide care for children whose place of care or school is closed, those amounts are also capped. Those are capped at $200 per day, or those are also only paid at 2/3 of their regular rate of pay. So there are some other caps that play into that.
So, Mike Scragg here. So it would seem that they'd be motivated to use our 80 hours of COVID leave first. We just, depending on their pay rate and how much, how that compares to the maximums in the act.
Commissioner Hodges, I have one other question. And is there any ability on our part, if an employee has been, at this point, deemed nonessential and has exhausted their 80 hours of COVID leave that we've granted, is there any option for them, instead of getting sick leave hours advanced, that they could just basically hold in place and not receive a paycheck? It was an inquiry that I had from an employee that didn't necessarily want to be advanced on sick leave, but would prefer to, you know, just be not here, not be paid.
Right. Mike Scragg, the, in that scenario, it would seem to me that they, before they go to that step, they'd want to take advantage of the emergency paid sick leave from the act if they're eligible. But there is provision in the personnel manual for a leave of absence, essentially without pay, on a case-by-case basis to be approved by the city manager.
Thank you.
And I'm looking at Greg and Natalie to see if I've misstated any of that.
Mayor Hoppaker, the 80 hours of emergency paid sick leave under the Department of Labor doesn't apply to everybody. You have to meet certain criteria. I just want people that are listening to this to understand that not every employee qualifies for that second 80 hours.
That's correct. There's six criteria. One of those being, now, with the Department of Labor's interpretation, one of those being a stay-at-home order. So--
Commissioner Davis, if an employee elected to have a three-month leave of absence, say they got sick, exhausted all this, but they had the wherewithal to stay at home for three months, would they then have to remit to the city money to cover their benefits, be it life insurance, health, whatever they were getting?
Natalie Fisher, yes. We would, most commonly, when that occurs, someone might take a family medical leave of absence and not have enough paid time on the books to cover it, to which we work with the employees and either allow them, if they opt to make payments to us monthly, or some of them might defer it and double up on payments when they return to work. So there is some flexibility, and we work on a case-by-case with employees in those circumstances.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may--
Yes, Greg.
The only point that, in relation to Commissioner Hodges' question, as employees explore their options with their department heads and with human resources, the only concern that I would have is that in this discussion of any potential for just a unpaid leave of absence, that that not be done in anticipation of, or without exploring the necessary criteria as far as any qualification for unemployment benefits. That's the only thing that I think we don't want to leave the impression, or leave any employee not advised to pursue that with human resources.
Mike Scragg here. Mr. Benson raises a good point. If an employee volunteers to be on a leave of absence or volunteers to not work, the unemployment division is going to ask about the details of their need for unemployment, and that could be a disqualifying factor. So they need to make a very informed decision, and we can't speak to 450 different possible scenarios in one broad stroke. But they have multiple leaves available to them, as well as leave advancement, as well as leave without pay. They'd have to look at them on a case-by-case basis to determine what's correct, and they certainly don't want to proceed before they've exhausted, they've looked into all the details.
Natalie Fisher, I did want to back up to our Article 17 other leave. In both emergency leave and leave of absence, there is language in there in present form that refers to either the emergency leave or the leave of absence occurring after all of the sufficient vacation or personal leave, or everything that is exhausted. So in order to grant the requests as stated, that might be something that we need to discuss and amend.
That's a good point. I'd forgotten that.
So, Commissioner Hodges here. So it sounds like in order to do a leave of absence, that all of the other leave, unless they exhausted in terms of vacation and sick leave, is it better approved?
As it's currently written, that's correct.
Commissioner Hodges, I realize that we don't want to have, you know, all 450 employees coming in to, you know, to discuss, you know, different things. We want to make this as easily understandable as possible, but would that be something that we would consider to offer additional flexibility on that? If it were, like Mr. Benson said, within the parameters of complications for unemployment? Or is this going to be a hard, you know, policy on this particular question?
Mike Scragg here. I think the first thing we need to do is verify unemployment, because I don't think you can voluntarily go on a leave of absence and have leave on the books and remain eligible for unemployment.
Mayor Hoppaker, maybe we need to finish these slides. I think we're asking questions before we've gotten through all the options. And so, and I think it'd be beneficial, maybe if we, if we kind of keep some of our questions till the end, because we've got unemployment and the CARES Act and some things to discuss that I think are going to jump in front of some of this, maybe. So, does that make sense? I just--
It asks for a little, it asks for a little, maybe, because we've got like over 100 and wide here.
Yeah. Well, I'm just, I'm afraid we're talking about something that may be not necessary or would be secondary to some other discussions we need to have, so.
Mayor, if I may, we're about through the city benefits summary. That's about half. If we could get to that point before we discuss the different options, could we take a five-minute recess? We've been here for two and a half hours. I'd like a little break.
If you'd--
I think there's a consensus.
Okay.
At least it's this end of the deal.
Okay. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Did Ms. Fisher get to the end?
Do you want to finish? Or do you want to--
The city benefits summary, and then we start into furloughs and--
Okay.
Natalie Fisher, okay, I'll hurry.
Okay, I didn't know where, okay.
This looks like a natural break.
So, jumping back to separation and reinstatement, the only other thing I was going to point out here was a little portion of the policy includes provisions for not only how we bring individuals back, but things we will give back in credit to the employee, including sick leave and tenure and retirement benefits prior to that termination that results as a form of the reduction in force or furlough.
Mike Scragg, I think acknowledging their tenure for the purpose of sick leave accrual and retirement benefits is workable, but as it currently reads, it could be said that you buy out an employee 1/3 of their sick leave, and then they return and they get their sick leave balance back. Well, I don't know that's the intent, and I don't know that that's practical. But to Ms. Fisher's point, there is some provision about if we did a, you know, a layoff or a furlough, a layoff or a reduction in force, and then brought an employee back, there is some provision about reinstatement that we'd have to address.
And finally, just a recap of the benefits that are offered by the city for our employees. In addition to a great working environment, we have health insurance that covers medical prescription and dental. The premiums there are listed. It's about an 80%, 20% cost share for those premiums. Keep in mind, we are self-funded. We fund that into our health fund, so we can pay everything needed to cover our employees and their family members. We do offer several holidays, participation in CAPERS and KPNF, life insurance. This is in addition to what is offered through CAPERS. It's one times the salary plus spouse and dependent coverage. Longevity, as we've already covered. We have an employee assistance program, access to both flexible spending accounts and 457K or deferred comp retirement accounts, and a few wellness initiatives.
Mike Scragg, just to be clear, the 80/20 is 80% city, 20% employee, and so the employee's share ranges from $118 for an individual to $318 for a family. It is very good coverage, and those rates are very reasonable, I think.
Okay. Any questions on the city benefits? I was going to look and see, because our clock, okay.
Commissioner Ryan here. We may get to this and the other parts, but when an employee, if they take a leave, do they continue life insurance, CAPERS, longevity? Some of those, I mean, I assume we can continue the health insurance, but what about life insurance and that?
Natalie Fisher, I've reached out to CAPERS for some additional guidance, depending upon changes in employee status. The life insurance policy that I mentioned here, which is separate, it's through MetLife, typically they will allow an individual the ability to port it, which is typically going to be at a higher rate than what they would obtain when the city pays for their coverage, as well as when CAPERS, when individuals leave or retire. I can't tell you specifically what those would be in all the options. As far as CAPERS, there are some, depending, again, on what the separation might be, and we'll talk a little bit more about some benefit options with different employment status changes to come. But right now, I'm not 100% sure. Getting some additional guidance specifically from CAPERS.
Okay. So I'm hearing it depends.
Yes.
Okay. Are we ready? We will take a five-minute break, and we'll be back.